Hi, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting, Monday, November 20th, 2023. We're quite meeting room Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Ashby, Mass., 02649. Broadcast live on local cable channel eight, stream live on the Town of Mashpee website. It is now 6:30. I'd like to convene the meeting in open session, please. Sorry, I'm gonna start with the political leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Can I also have a moment of silence, please? All right. Minutes, appointment and hearing, medication, new business. Discussion approval authorizing the town manager to send letters to support for the Bourne and Falmouth multi-use path connecting the Shining Sea Bike Path to the Canal Bike Path as a trail with rail. Mr. Collins, if you will.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe you have a letter from the DPW director in your packet, and also distributed was an email that I received from the Mashpee, or, excuse me, the Falmouth Town Manager, along with the former Town Manager at the time when this vote took place. I was respectfully requested to bring it before the board for the purposes of your consideration, and Falmouth is going to be reviewing it at an upcoming meeting, I believe, in December. The position is self-explanatory. Again, you should have the memo there from the DPW director, and for multiple reasons, that is the position that's recommended.
Well, I'm a strong support. How does the rest of the board have any discussion on the topic, or?
It's all very clear.
Yeah, I think so as well.
Anybody have anything to?
A motion to approve the authorization of the Town Manager to send letters of support to Bourne-Falmouth multi-use path connecting the Shining Sea Bike Path and Canal Bike Path as a trail with rail.
Second.
I have a first and second. Any discussion? Not hearing any? Start with David.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. That's the start of off. Next up, discussion and possible vote on granting an abatement of betterment assessment for 21 Cedar Street, David G. Peck. Is David Peck here?
I'm here, yeah.
Your mic coming up? Might just introduce yourself and then just letting us know what?
Yeah, hi. My name is David Peck. I'm the owner of 21 Cedar Street, along with One Chestnut Street. I have owned these properties, 21 Chestnut Street, since 2017, when I bought it from my brother. It was a family home that my, I lived in and my parents lived in. They passed away, so I bought my brother's share, and I own it now with my family. 21 Cedar Street is a vacant lot adjacent to it. And what the betterment means and what the request of the abatement is about is I'm paying the assessment twice, because I own two lots. The second lot, 21 Cedar, is vacant. It's a wooded lot. I don't use it, so it doesn't represent any use of the road or anywhere on it. And two assessments is a hefty hunk of change. And there's only one of me.
But it now makes your vacant property worth more.
I'm sorry?
It makes your vacant property worth more in value.
Right, and so I pay more taxes on it, but I don't use it anymore than I did before. I use the house, but not the vacant lot.
Mr. Collins?
I just want to caution the board, and I'm certainly not looking to argue with the fine gentleman, I just want to point out that these homes have already been assessed. So the town would have to pick up approximately $19,000 if you grant that abatement, because it's already been assessed. So I just want to caution the board on that before you take a vote.
So, if you don't mind, and that's my concern, what the Town Manager just brought up. You'd like to keep the land open and so that you don't have anybody beside you. But the town, the town would have to pick up that $19,000 is the difference.
I understand.
And that's, it's not something that I want to do. What we try to encourage is development in areas and not leave it open spaces side by side. And like Rod said, it's a pretty big chunk of change. You're not interested in selling that property to, you know, even if you put restrictions on it, or some, you know, manner that would, you could sell it and still enjoy your property and not have that area as open space?
Yeah, no, I get requests to sell it with some regularity from strangers. I'd like, I'd prefer not to. I believe the, the town benefits from having a little bit more open space. My neighbors certainly do, I do. But I understand the town's position. It is a lot of money for the town as well. And I'm, but I am paying the betterment. I am paying my assessment of it. I don't, I don't quarrel with that. I just can't pay it twice.
I have a clarifying question. When, when a street's converted from private to public, is there any differentiation whether the land has been improved or whether it's, has, isn't, it's a vacant lot?
The assessment is to get it up to the grade in the specifications, so when we do take these streets over, it is up to the standards that DPW expects, so that we're not doing the work ourselves. In other words, we're taking on a street that is ready to go, and then obviously with the acceptance from the town, we're maintaining it from that point forward.
Right, thank you.
I think it's just, you know, my personal opinion, I think it's all part of the box that I don't want to go. You know, the fact that, you know, Mr. Peck can financially benefit from not paying taxes or a betterment on a property that he can realize appreciate, appreciate in value.
Because there are two lots.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the.
I'm not.
That's the issue.
Yes.
So that's where I stand, but.
I feel, I feel the same way.
We can have a motion to deny the request if, do I hear a motion to?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it the purpose of the town to maximize development of every possible lot in Mashpee? Is that the purpose?
No.
No.
Because that's what it's going to force, is I'll have to sell the lot and we'll build another house on it. I understood that to be sort of the, the interest of your question was to, was to get the town to get more lots, more houses. I am paying, I am paying the taxes on that, on that lot with no house on it, as if it had a house on it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, you know, it's, it's not personal. I mean, there's.
No, I understand.
There's a lot of people that have, you know, they, they don't want a neighbor close by, and it goes up for sale. They'll buy it, and it, they can appreciate the value because they own it, but they also own the rights to it, so they can prevent a neighbor growing, you know, building next door. So, all different reasons, you know, that I see, but I don't feel comfortable with my person, but that's my personal opinion.
I'm in agreement. I think what you heard from Miss Select Board Member O'Hara is an individual opinion. It's not my position, I, I can't speak for the rest of the board, is to their position on, you know, developing every lot. That's not my intent. As much as I do sympathize with you, I feel like because the assessments have already been done and things, you know, the 19,000, the road takings and everything else factored in, I'm not sure where that leaves us. I feel like we, it's kind of a conundrum of situation, but I'm not sure what to do other than what's been proposed.
Can I have a motion to deny granting the assessment or the?
A motion, a motion to deny granting an abatement of a betterment assessment for 21 Cedar Street, David Peck.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, first and second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. David?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes as well.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry about that. Sorry.
Discussion and approval of the following temporary sign permits. Mashpee Firefighters Annual Homeless for the Holidays, December 4th through the 10th, 2023. Nicole Stanley.
Mr. Chair, we advised her that she didn't have to come in. Just to remind the board, this is an annual event, and the public safety individuals do a great thing at that location for the holidays, and they just want to have the sign out there, and you've approved it every year. Did not see the necessity of her coming in. I assume accurately that you would have no issues.
At the Rotary, they're still doing it?
Yes.
Does anybody in the board have any questions about it?
Motion to approve the Mashpee Firefighters Annual Homeless for the Holidays, December 4th through the 10th, 2023 event.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any?
All I want to say is I've gone every year over to the Firefighters Standout.
Yep.
They do a great job. They, they're out there for hours around the clock. They welcome you to come by and drop off a gift if you can, or a toy. Bring your children, anything you want. They, they really are a great bunch of guys, and they do a great service to this town and our residents. So I hope you'll go to line, get a chance to go visit them as well.
It's a great event.
All right, you got a first and a second. Start with Kayla?
Yes.
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 Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, next one up, Mashpee Youth Baseball and Softball, December 1st through the 6th, 2023. Christopher Losh. Hey, Chris.
How are you? Thank you for your time.
You might just start us off, just let us know what, what you're looking to do and?
So Mashpee Youth Baseball is looking to open our registration December 1st through February 1st. Like to keep the signs up as long as possible. Put them along, they'd be approximately three square feet, so very small, a foot and a half by two feet, something like that. Just small yard signs with the.
The metal statue type?
Correct, correct, correct. And just very simple language, probably two colors. We're a nonprofit, so we got to keep the costs very low, and would like to put the signs up at the entrances and exits of the Mashpee Rotary, not on the interior, just on the, the end. Correct, correct. Already spoken with Catherine, and she said that anything on the inside is a big no-no, so we're good with that. Also like to put some on Old Barnstable Road leading to and from the schools, because our age group is all the way from four years old to 12 years old. So it would be Quashnet and Casey Coombs. Like to keep the signs up as long as possible so we can get our numbers up. We're looking, we've been in the process of rebuilding with a new board, and would like to keep the signs up as long as possible to get the word out as much as possible so we can get our numbers up and get more kids playing baseball. We're working hand in hand with soccer to make sure that scheduling is going to be as friendly as possible, because we do have a lot of, a lot of kids that play both sports.
So you're doing, you're going to put the signs up from December 1st through the 6th?
If that's what's allowed, then yes.
And then why don't you come back in or have, and for another set of permission to put the signs maybe at some time in January?
All right.
You know, I mean, you're coming in and asking for a permit for the amount of days, and you want to do it longer, and signs really get wrecked when you leave them out too long.
They do.
And then people get tired of seeing them. But then if you pull them after your time and then come back in and ask permission to do it again.
Understood, thank you.
Is there a number of signs?
Again, being a nonprofit, we want to keep the prices down. We're looking to purchase approximately 25, but we're going to reserve some. I'm going to be speaking with the executive director of Mashpee Commons. I know him from previous work that I did with them, and to see if I can put some at the entrances and exits of their property, so.
I, I think that will violate your policy.
Yes.
I, I don't have it in front of me, but I can almost guarantee you 25 is going to exceed.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Is there?
I do want to, I do appreciate, I mean, back when my kids were doing Little League Baseball, it was always, I missed it every year. I, I was like, why do you have to sign up so early? I understand there's a lot to go into it. It's all volunteer. So I do appreciate the struggle of getting parents aware of, you know, signups, but, you know, the number and then the time period, you know, how does the board feel? I mean.
Yeah, we'd have to, our limit.
Five days. It's five days, right?
Right.
So as Carol had suggested, you could come back then.
But then we're still dealing with the number of signs. It's 25, so.
Yes, but you're, I think you're asking about the days, but yes, 25, but I don't.
Does it specifically say a limit? I'm looking for it.
Right here, Dave. Yeah, I mean, I, I had a.
Oh, no, no, we say the, not policy.
In the policy.
Policy.
I don't think it does.
I'm pretty sure. I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah, I, I think we.
Oh, you have the policy, let me see it.
I'm, I'm looking over. I'm not saying where.
I'm not either.
So when does actually signups begin?
December 1st.
So it starts December 1st, so you want to, you want to put them up as soon as possible, right? Or?
Then it references zoning by laws and stuff like that, so I don't.
I, we wouldn't put, honestly, we haven't even purchased them yet. Again, we don't have a lot of cash on hand, so I'm, wasn't planning on purchasing signs until we had approval from the town. If there is a limit, I'm willing to work with whatever we're allowed.
Makes sense.
Okay, I may stand corrected. I think the limits are on the size.
And the days.
And the days. So there may not be a limit on the number.
Just the days and the size.
Have they put in the?
I think you are, I think you are supposed to explain where they're going to be, so you'd have to outline where the 25 would be, I think. Because there are other stipulations, like they shouldn't be in islands and things like that, so I think that in order to hold people accountable to that, they'd like to know where they are.
Okay, it's just.
Okay, it does say, request for multiple signs may be limited to one on each of the following roadways, and then it lists the roadways. So I believe that's what I was referring to.
Oh.
Or at least that's what I had in my mind when I said that. So possibly if you could call our office, and we'll get together with you and we'll work it out.
That makes sense, right. According to the, you'll, you know, put them out according to the bylaws.
We'll get it.
Yeah, because.
Bottom line.
So is that something?
We'll get it figured out.
We can leave it at the discretion of the Town Manager?
So you're going to approve this and move it along.
We'll get it figured out.
I motion to approve.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Your motion to approve?
The signs.
With, to work it out with the Town Manager?
With Christopher.
Yes.
Tell me how you'll work it out with the, so.
This is made.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
All right, so, all right, so I, I have a first and I have a second. Start up with Kayla?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just work with, of course, of course, thank you.
Thanks for being there.
Thank you.
No, thank you, thank you.
It's important for the kids.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion and approval of reappointment to the Barnstable County Dredge Advisory Committee, term January 1st, 2024, December 31st, 2026. Our master, Robert Tomino.
This, this, Mr. Chair, is just a renewal of a current appointment to get in sync with their timeline. They go by calendar year versus fiscal year, so we just ask that you approve this to get in sync with the county's January 1st to December 31st.
Okay. Anybody have any discussion? If not, kind of a motion to approve?
I moved. Okay. Second.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? We'll go first, second?
However.
All right, any discussion? If not, David?
Yes.
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
I remember.
I'm sure Catherine got it. She got it right.
Remember when we used, we used to watch the dredge? I mean, it was really a big issue to get the dredging dredge down here, and everybody would be waiting just to get down to watch the dredge come in and get things moving.
I'm very familiar.
That's right.
Discussion and approval of accepting the following resignations. Cultural Council term expires September 30th, 2025. Nina Kokamazi.
They can only serve six consecutive years, I believe it is, so unfortunately.
Time is up.
The time is up, and I would recommend that the board accept this with regret.
Motion to accept with regret.
Second. First and second. Any discussion? Not? Kayla?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Interviews, discussions, and possible approvals of the following appointments. Environmental Oversight Committee, term expires June 30th, 2024. Alexandra Zolo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for postponing this from last week. I appreciate it.
No, I'm glad it worked out because you're not going to miss a meeting, and.
Yeah.
So this is great. You might just.
Sure.
Quick introduction, just AY ya.
Yeah, my name's Alex. I've lived in Mashpee for the last 10 years, about, a little over, and I've been working in the conservation realm ever since, municipally for the Town of Falmouth, and then from the nonprofit side for the 300 Committee Land Trust, where I currently serve as the Director of Stewardship and Community Engagement. So it's kind of one of those things, just taking my professional life and then putting it into volunteer work and trying to help out.
That's great.
And I serve on the Concom currently.
Okay, great. David, want to?
Looking over Allison's credentials and things, you know, her work with the 300 Committee, we're all familiar with the great work that they do, and also with her work with the Conservation Department in the Town of Falmouth, we think that she brings an excellent set of expertise to the Environmental Oversight Committee, and we did hold a meeting, our last meeting, where it was unanimous by all present to highly recommend, as you'll see, the form in the packet states. So I would enter, I would make a motion to accept and approve Allison, Alex Zolo, to be appointed to the EOC.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right, first and second. Any discussion? Not hearing? David?
Yes.
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 An incredible resume, yes.
Thank you.
And I'm a yes, absolutely.
Excellent, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mashpee Wakeby Lake Management Committee, term expires June 30th, 2024. Allison Bernhardt. Is that a?
We were notified, Mr. Chair, that she was unable to attend. I believe she had a situation that came up that was not anticipated, so she is unfortunately not able to be here tonight. We received that word.
And she is scheduled for 12:04.
Okay, all right, so she's off for 12:04. Thank you. Discussion and possible approval of forming a Community Development Block Grant Working Group. As we discussed last meeting, just carried it forward just to, the next meeting, just to, you know, talk about it some more. I don't know if, do you have anything to add to discussion as far as research on?
I think what I would suggest to the board is to have essentially a working group or an ad hoc committee that is able to work with me for the purposes of sharing ideas and concepts and, and direction, and how this can materialize without necessarily relying heavily on town staff. I think one of the issues has been, town staff has been, for the lack of a better description, taxed in order to get some of this work done, and I don't believe that it should necessarily be put on hold. I think it's just a matter of coordinating an organ, an organizational group for the purposes of bringing some possibilities forward in a, in a faster fashion.
So would you suggest that we're?
I, I'm just looking for the board's okay to have the flexibility to, to have this ad hoc group for the sake of, again, doing exactly what I described, and then obviously anything that is going to require a board action will come back to the board if it's a policy-related matter.
So are we looking for people to come forward to volunteer, to work in the working group, or?
I, I do believe that I've got a few people that would be willing to step forward. One happens to be sitting here. So I know that this can be coordinated effectively. I'm just, I, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel here.
Agreed, that's what I don't want to do.
I think I'm just looking to have a little flexibility. I mean, generally, a select board member is not involved in operations, as you know. I don't look at it this way. I think it's just a way to coordinate things for the sake of getting things on a faster track. And if I had the town resources available where I could meet certain deadlines right now for this particular project, then I would say, we don't need to bother with this. But I think the town has relied heavily on volunteerism at a time when it's appropriate, and I think this is one of those times.
So are you looking for the board to authorize you to administer this?
This ad hoc.
And organize this ad hoc group?
Yes, for that, for this purpose.
So moved.
I'll second that. First and second. Any other discussion?
For, for me, you know, community development block grants are highly competitive. They're driven by accurate information and up-to-date information and community input and everything else, so I think it's a great idea that, to utilize people that are offering their time to do that, you know, for. So I think it's a great idea that, to utilize people that are offering their time to do that, you know, free of charge. I think it's a great idea and fully support establishing such a committee. I think it will be very helpful in working towards it.
And, and just to clarify, they, they would work with me and then I would bring anything to the board.
Right. Exactly.
Any, anything else, start it off, Kayla?
Yes.
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 David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Great. Moving forward. Discussion and approval of closure of Mashpee Town Offices for the Annual Organization Day.
Yes, this is an annual event, essentially what this amounts to is we are open for the sake of work. We are closed to the public.
Right.
And this does not affect any of the essential services. And what I mean by that is, it doesn't affect police, it doesn't affect fire, and it doesn't affect D P W. But all of the town offices here, including Recreation Council and Aging, the library, who am I missing?
That's it. D N R is still on there.
Yeah, D N R is open, so it's, it's the ones that I just mentioned and it is a dress down day. It's a, everybody gets to wear jeans that particular day and we tackle the files in the attic. We do a lot of purging at the offices and it's a focus on making sure that your work area gets organized or reorganized. And eventually, we have D P W pick up some piles of stuff that.
Shredding.
For shredding and so on and so forth.
Spring cleaning in the winter.
It's, it's spring cleaning in the winter and we also, to be perfectly frank, to the public and to the board, we do have a moment around lunchtime where we gather in this room for the sake of, I think, some good chemistry, for the sake of getting together because we generally don't have the opportunity because the public is coming in and expecting to be served and that's our job. But this is the one day where we're working, but we're closed to the public.
A motion to approve the closure of Mashpee Town Hall Office for the Annual Organizational Day, Friday, December 15th, 2023.
I'll second the motion.
First and second, any discussion? I don't like the name, but just saying. Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Spring cleaning in the winter, just, it says it all, says it all. All right.
Excuse me, could you hit start, please? Thank you.
Hi, Pat.
Hey, John, how are you?
Oh, man. All right, next up, a state ethics complaint against the town to be explained by the town manager, Mr. Collins.
Yes, I believe in your packet, everything is fairly self explanatory. Essentially, what happened is a staff member was going to be attending a meeting and as a result of attending the meeting was expressing a little concern relative to the content based on the possibility of advocacy or political activities. Long story short, I understood the concern, I relayed the concern over to town council. Town council understood the legitimacy of the concern and wrote back to me what should be in your packet. Based on town council's response, I responded accordingly and the, the opinion was written in good faith and subsequently, the meeting that had been scheduled was postponed or canceled and subsequently to that, there was an explanation that was requested. It was provided in writing, you can see that that was also sent to the chair of the committee involved. And then I was going to be attending the meeting at their request, I believe it was scheduled tomorrow. And then I was informed of this complaint. And because town council and myself were specifically referenced, I wanted to bring it before the board. Quite frankly, I think it's frivolous and it's a waste of my time.
Problem is, a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on and to deal with complaints, that's a problem. Is, is Pat?
Yes, he's.
Pat, do you want to?
Sure, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate it.
Sure, as town manager Collins has indicated, he contacted me and requested that I render an opinion as to whether I thought that the proposed meeting of the Inclusion Tourism Committee would constitute any type of an ethics or open meeting law violation. I reviewed the facts relating to the matter, I did some research in the law and I rendered an opinion and that opinion was that it would be inappropriate, in my view, under the ethics statute for the committee to engage in activity in their formal capacity as a town committee to try to influence or otherwise state positions or viewpoints on a town meeting warrant article that was impending. And as I noted to the town manager earlier this week when we spoke about this, I stand by my opinion. Nothing's changed, that would cause me to reconsider. The complaint, as it's so captioned, that was filed on this matter, doesn't really assert a complaint per se. As, as you know, complaints filed with the Ethics Commission generally allege a violation of the Conflict of Interest Law, Chapter 268A. I don't think that that's, as I read it anyways, I don't think that any such violation of the Conflict of Interest Law is alleged here. I believe the complainant is merely satisfied with the opinion and the action that the town manager took and has, and that's reached out to the Ethics Commission for their viewpoint. And he is within his rights to do that and he went and contacted the Ethics Commission and asked for a confidential opinion on, on an ethics issue, but the fact that it was labeled a complaint, I believe did, you know, raise some concerns within the town manager's mind, well, as well as mine. But it's, as, as I said, it's clearly a straightforward matter, I rendered an opinion. The complaining can agree or disagree with that opinion, I don't think there's any basis here for a conflict of interest complaint. It appears that the document was filed on about October 24th with the Ethics Commission. I haven't heard anything from anyone at the Ethics, I don't believe the town manager has either, so I have no idea what the ultimate disposition would be, but I concur with his statement of the, the facts that preceded this.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. Yeah, I mean, you know, no offense to you, Pat, but, you know, another thing, I, I look at this as someone files a complaint that affects or questions legal counsel, that also costs the town money because your timing's free. So that's, you know, that's another thing with, you know, I think people, I think if people thought twice before acting emotionally and, you know, filing a complaint where we have to seek legal counsel, which costs the town money. So, and that goes across, I don't care what it is, if it's, if it's on, has good merit and, you know, I understand, but, you know, I don't know, you have a position where the town manager cancels it up and recommends canceling of a special appointment or a special meeting to be held. I, I just get annoyed with the fact that we have to pay legal counsel.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, I think what's important to understand in these situations, legal counsel nor myself have any dog in the fight. We are not looking at the politics, the philosophies, or anything. What we're looking at are the legal elements. And when I ask the town attorney for an opinion, it's factually driven, it's not emotionally driven. And the focus is not only on the facts, but what it's really restricted to is whether or not this is a violation of a bylaw, a state law, settled case law, a constitutional provision, and so on. And when he renders his opinion, it's always concise, it's professional, it's to the point and he always supports it with the appropriate, either case law or the applicable and reasonable interpretations of law. Until a court of competent jurisdiction determines that town council's opinion is wrong, who am I to dispute what town council provides, particularly given his record? He's been accurate, I want to say, darn close, if not 100% of the time. And the last few times we've been in court, everything has been dismissed that his firm is representing us on. So we, we make a good faith decision based on sound reasoning that is legally founded. It's not based on anything else, it's legal. And then we, we make the call, again, in good faith and, you know what? I understand anybody can write anything they want, but the fact of the matter is, nobody's going to question my ethics and nobody's going to question town council's ethics as long as I'm around.
And then you, and you informed the, the chair, Marie Stevenson, and she canceled the meet, right?
That is correct.
That's, so she did as chair what was appropriate. So, I, I mean, I don't, I think I've stated my opinion, I just would rather not deal with those complaints, but. Anybody else have any?
I think it's all been said.
Yeah.
No, I think it's, you know, there's enough conversation that takes place. If you have a question or you don't, if you disagree with the decision, have a conversation, not just go to the State Ethics Board or something. It doesn't need to go that far, you have a conversation locally until you're satisfied with the answer.
So, and that's, this is just more of an FYI, right, to just inform us?
If the board has any questions, you can feel free to ask myself or council. You've got all the paperwork, I've said what I've had to say, I have nothing else to say.
All right. Next up, a public comment. I'm sorry, is there? There's none?
No.
Okay. Nope, all right, no one for public comment. Additional topics, any additional topics for anybody, liaison reports?
I, I have a few.
Okay.
Let's see, from Assembly delegates, the delegates unanimously passed at the last meeting, last week, I think the 13th, a resolution to request the state move forward with monies available to add charging stations for e-vehicles throughout the Cape. The delegate that brought it forward had done a study, there were so few of them and the, his concern and the concern of all the delegates present at that point were the implications for tourism. So there seems to be money available and they're asking the state to move forward. I guess several gasoline stations are interested in working with the state, but anyway, that's coming. There's a ballot question in preparation for November 2024 that proposes changes to the county charter to codify the role of the Assembly with regard to county budgeting issues. So that is with legal, that will be made public soon and I just wanted the board to know. The other thing that I think is interesting is, and I had heard this first from our Cape Cod, from our chamber in Mashpee, the Cape Cod Chamber came and presented the Cape Cod Tourism Destination Marketing District Plan. So T D M D, when you hear that, you'll know what it is. Essentially, Massachusetts spends less money than most states in advertising tourism. It's a way to, to work on that. It's going to be proposed at each select board, it'll come to select boards first. Essentially, we're asking, or the chamber is asking for a 1.5% increase on hotel, non-short-term rental hotel rates. And that will go to marketing development, workforce and business development. And I believe, I shouldn't say believe, I know I have this right, $10,000 will come back to each participant account for additional things. The Cape Cod Commission is holding a digital equity workshop and sandwich, encouraging broad community support and that's at the Center for Active Living, that's fairly new, if you haven't been there, it's, it's worth going to see. That's December 6th at 5:30. Then from our chamber, Thanksgiving Meal Delivery is this Wednesday, meeting at Roach. We've got a long list of volunteers, that's from 10:30 to 1:00 and that's making sure that people get Thanksgiving meals. The Tree Lighting is the Friday after Thanksgiving, 11:24, from 3:30 to 5:00 with Santa. Shop Local is taking place on 11/28 and then December 5th, 12th, and 19th. December 9th, if everybody could jot it down, is the Christmas Parade, 5:30 to 6:30. And December 10th, this is my last one, is Breakfast with Santa at Soprano's. And I believe that's 8:30 to 10:00.
Lots of chamber stuff going on, huh?
Lots of chamber stuff going on.
Awesome. Any other liaison reports?
Yes, I do, I want to give a big shout out to our Recreation Director, Mary Bradbury, and to the town employees, Fire Department, Police Department, our library, Council of Aging, D N R, Mashpee TV. I don't know if I forgot anybody, but we did fill a van on, and we filled a van plus and all the town employees did an excellent job in what they gave.
That's awesome.
To be split with the Falmouth Food Pantry and Christ the Cube. And it was very much appreciated because the growing need is more and more every week, unfortunately.
Yes.
She did a great job organizing and it was great to be a part of it.
That's awesome. Got to do a great job every year.
This was our ninth year doing it.
Good work.
Any other liaison reports? Water quality updates, town manager updates.
We, well, for water quality, we have a wastewater superintendent who started officially today and.
Oh, he did start officially.
He started officially today and looking forward to him getting settled in and. That's, that's about it. Manager updates, I echo what select board member chairman just said. That is a wonderful event and the town employees do participate in that and the, the spirit is very heartwarming, so I echo what you just said.
Great. I guess executive side, unless there's something else? Motion to adjourn? So moved, smooth?
A motion to.
Adjourn.
Into executive session. I move the board convene in executive session to discuss the deposition and value of real property, 35 Lake, parcel 28, 409 Main, parcel 38, 414 Main Street, Meeting House Road and Falmouth Road, parcels 68 through 14, 68, 16 presumed to general law, Section 30A, subsection 21A, 6 and C, 30B, and have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, from which we will not reconvene in open session.
Second? Did the motion right?
That was the motion.
Have a second?
You have a second?
All in favor?
Did you, did you get a second?
Yes.